Is everyone ready to go?
Yes.
You're going to do a call to order, correct? You'll run the list. Do you have the list? Okay. At this time, we will start this meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee DeBoer.
He's on Zoom. I'd like to make an eye from her.
Try speaking, Shante. Trustee DeBoer. Not hearing you. If you're...
Here? Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Trustee Hallquist?
Here.
All right, we're going to come back to trustee DeBoer.
She typed here.
So she can hear?
She can hear, she can't speak.
Okay. Trustee DeBoer is on via Zoom. She has sent it...
Try again, trustee DeBoer.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, but it's only through my computer. Hold on.
That's okay. She's announced through Ryan's computer that she is here. At this time, we have the pledge of allegiance, which is led by trustee Connor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to hold up for just one second. Ryan's taking care of technical difficulties. You'll get to hear it. Yeah, did we get cake?
You can't retire without cake.
He's got some time left. Okay. We'll move on. Are we even on public comments? This is going to be a tough one. But are we on public comments? Does anybody want to speak in public comments? Okay. So now we'll move to the first item of our agenda. Mr. Felkner, if you could just step up, please. This is a special one. It really is.
Are you going out there as a roast?
No, I'm not going to go out there. It's not a roast. I think it's something that's definitely warranted. It's something that's been in order, and it's something that Mr. Felkner, in my tenure of being the village president, has helped to really facilitate great changes and make this village a better place. I really feel that way. And to make not only DPW a better place, but the village as a whole, and to make the community feel... You know where we came from. I know some of where we come from. You even know more. It took a long time getting there, but there was no question that you being in the position you were in was the best thing that this village could do to set DPW and getting things done in this village on the right course. And I really, truly mean that. And with that, we have a proclamation for you. So in recognition, I'm going to read this proclamation in recognition of 29 years of service to the village of Heartland by David Felkner. Whereas David Felkner accepted the position of general laborer for the village of Heartland, Department of Public Works, on May 17, 1995, with a starting wage of $12.60 per hour.
That's what he finished with.
Whereas David Felkner, for his excellent performance and dedication to the village of Heartland, was promoted May 1, 2006, to utility foreman for the Heartland, for the village of Heartland Public Works, and on July 1, 2018, was promoted to utility operations supervisor. Whereas David Felkner, for his knowledge, skills, and abilities, was promoted to interim public works director on June 28, 2021, and on January 1, 2023, was promoted to public works director for the village of Heartland. Whereas David Felkner served the village of Heartland with selfless passion, as he always met the call for help at all hours of the day or night. His vision and leadership has improved not only the public works department, but the entire village. Whereas David Felkner has been an asset to our community, and while he will be missed, his retirement after 29 years of service is well deserved. Now, therefore, the village board, the village of Heartland, hereby proclaims congratulations and thanks to David Felkner upon his retirement, encourages all residents and staff to join in expressing our tremendous gratitude for his service. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Can I have a mic for a little bit?
Absolutely.
First of all, I'd like to thank my wife and kids. They put up with me bringing work home for 29 years. My wife doesn't realize this, that she owes me two years because she's two years younger, but she'll be off to work while I'm still in my pajamas. I want to thank the residents, business owners, and developers that did work with the village of Heartland. We got to meet some good people. I made friends of residents. A lot of business owners as well. I want to thank the village board, a park board, and I worked with a lot of special organizations, Kiwanis, Ecos, and what have you. So I thoroughly enjoyed that time there. Ryan, I want to thank you. I want to thank administration, the ladies upstairs. We... Sometimes it's a riot working up there. We have our fun, but we get the work done. I also want to thank the building inspector, engineering department. I work with them every day of the week. I want to thank the department heads and all the departments. I think we really meshed really well, all the departments throughout the village, and I truly appreciate the help on that. Public Works. I tell everybody this, whether they want to hear it or not. I think we have the best public works in anywhere in the state. I'll put our public works against anybody's public works. It's pretty rare that Public Works Department does all the aspects that we do, the cemeteries, water, sewer, streets, parks. We do a lot, and I do commend that. And I'm glad I got to be part of that with developing this public works department. They're phenomenal. That's all I have, and I thank you. I will be around.
I have... I'm representing the park board. And I've been on the park board for 30 years. You don't see this.
I let you all do me.
I'm not getting any of this. But I can speak, and since '23, I'm going to give you a list of all the things that he has accomplished as compared to the previous DPW head, which maybe wasn't as friendly to the parks. So I'm going to go down park per park here. So in Centennial Park, we have new playground equipment, riverbank cleanup that he helped with Kiwanis and Ecos, rehabilitation of the baseball diamond. At Harper Park, new pedestrian walk bridge, removed dead trees and regraded the west side of the river. Rehabilit... rehabilitate? Re... How do you say that?
Habilitated.
Rehabilitated the baseball diamond. Bark River Park, again, the new baseball diamond, new pedestrian walk bridge, removed dead trees and regraded the west side of the river, had asphalt redone with the curb so the parking lot didn't wash onto the baseball field. Penbrook Park helped organize a walk path through the woods with Ecos and Kiwanis, resurfaced the tennis courts and converted them to four pickleball and one tennis court. Also did the baseball diamond and fencing. Nixon Park instrumental in installing the bollards along the walk paths, helped coordinate the remodeling of the warming shed, dredge the pond along with plantings around the water. New playground equipment, new parking lot with additional parking and redid the walking paths. New pickleball courts with lights and resurfaced old tennis courts and converting them into new pickleball courts. Coordinate bringing added power into the park for hometown celebration. Also did the baseball diamond, new pedestrian walk bridge, and also assisted in bringing the ice rink to the park. So those are just a few, but that's a lot in only, what, two years, year and a half? So the park board really appreciates it. And Rick is also on the park board, and I think he can probably say the same.
Kudos to you. Very, very nice job.
Thank you. I will walk down the proclamation.
Can we do a photo? Also, we're too cheap to frame it, sorry.
Congratulations, Dave. You served this village well, Mr. Felkner, no doubt about it. Thanks for helping in getting us there. At this time, we have another wonderful item. We have a presentation of a $1,000 check by the Women's Club to the village of Heartland. They are here, and they will take the podium. If you'd like to speak, you could speak at the microphone, and then you can basically go wherever you want.
You can speak. Well, thank you. The Women's Club is more than happy to give this to the village. We are so happy to be a part of this community, and we try to give back as much as we can. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you very much.
So I'll give you a little backdrop on this. I met with the Women's Club in 2023. They were undecided what they wanted to do. They either wanted to put a park bench over by the pond in Nixon Park or by a couple of these big planters, these flower pots here. So they were undecided. So what they decided to do is cut us a check and let Public Works decide and take the money and figure out what we want to move forward with. So the Women's Club of Heartland, we truly appreciate the $1,000 donation. Thank you.
Yeah, very nice. Thank you. And to the Women's Club of Heartland, I will extend a welcome of saying anytime you would like to speak, even with your not bringing a check. If you'd like to speak to let people know, because the more often that people hear from you, they know how they can get involved, especially women in Heartland, but also just Heartland knows what you're doing. And obviously, all of this helps the village of Heartland. But please don't ever hesitate to send us an email or show up in a meeting just to give us an update of things you're doing or how any of us can help. Thank you very much for everything you're doing. All right. It's been requested, since we have trustees, that we're not at the meetings. It's been requested we take these meeting minutes up separately, but we have consideration of village board minutes. First, we're going to take the April 3, 2024, village board meeting minutes. Let's take those up if anybody would like to make a motion or say anything on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the village board minutes of April 3, 2024.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to approve the village board minutes from April 3, 2024. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did we get Shante?
Abstain.
She did.
Okay.
Abstain. Okay.
And now we have the village board meeting minutes from April 8, 2024.
Make a motion that we approve the board minutes from April 8, 2024.
It's been moved in second to approve the board minutes from April 8, 2024. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have consideration of vouchers for payments in the amount of $244,609.89.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers and checks in the amount of $244,609.89.
Second, it's been moved in second to approve the vouchers for $244,609.89. Any discussion?
Ryan, one question. The category of unbudgeted, where does that come out of?
Unbudgeted.
Do we... So we have...
No, so you're talking about the 401-57-300-290 account?
300, 57, 300. Oh, 290, yes.
So that is items that, yeah, go into capital projects that aren't budgeted for. But again, with our interest income, it covers that. So that's where the quarry's been going, quick trip, until it was finalized. Now those things will be not going there.
Okay. I was just curious where...
Yep.
Now we have... Oh, I'm sorry. We have to vote on it. Anybody else for a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have items that were referred from the April 15, 2024, plan commission meeting. We have review and consideration of a request for a conditional use permit and business occupancy permit application for SD Hartland, Inc. at 805 Cardinal Lane. This is the mobile gas station.
All right. So this was approved at the plan commission. They were not at the plan commission meeting. There's some health issues with the owner, someone in the owner's family, I believe. We did catch, and they caught, that they have a desire for this gas station to be open 24 hours a day. This is the one on Cardinal and Highway 83. The plan commission did approve 6:00 AM to midnight because that's what was in the packet. But I would leave it up to you guys and gals if you'd like to vote this forward or move it back to the plan commission. Again, it's just the... It's the same operation of business, but they would like to be 24 hours. Quick trip will be 24 hours as well.
Do we have an ordinance that says that they can't be open 24 hours a day? If there's no ordinance, I don't see a problem. Yeah, that's not... We can't do that.
Is that in their plan of operation?
It is in their updated occupancy permit. So it went through the plan commission. It was... We... Somebody had said they were open 24 hours a day, so we reached out. They didn't realize that they put the same hours.
I'd make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit and business occupancy permit for SD Hartland.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the conditional use permit and permit applications for SD Hartland, Inc., which is at 805 Cardinal Lane. It's the mobile gas station. I'll open this up for discussion if no one else has anything to say.
To confirm it.
To confirm 24-hour use.
Yes, understood.
And my second is for 24 hours.
With 24-hour use. Understood. Does anybody have a disagreement with the motion? Does anybody have anything input that they want to put in? I do have something I want to input, but a lot. I really think it's important, especially when we're getting towards this, especially we'll have someone open towards midnight. And I have talked with chief. I'm not just doing this blindly. The communities around us are doing it. I'm not saying it's a... It's not to try to... it's not to try to create people drinking more. It's simply business, and other communities are doing it around us, so we're just causing people to drive to Della Field or drive to Peewaqui, but I think that this board, we really will need to think about opening up our laws that allow people to stay up past, sell beer, if I'm not, I don't know what else I can sell, but beer past midnight. I know that they do it in Peewaqui. I know they do it in Della Field. It's not hard liquor, but beer and seltzers and some other things, I'm not sure exactly which. I have talked with chief, it doesn't sound like there's, I just want the board to know, we got to compete with other communities.
Selling from what, nine to midnight beyond?
It's legal to sell until midnight, and you can run this by chief. It's technically state law. No, state law allows beer to be sold till midnight. Alcohol, or
Liquor.
Liquor. And like even wine cannot be sold past nine. Chief, if you want to jump in, you can. I just for discussion's sake, I want to keep us competitive, and I think it's appropriate. If all the communities around us are doing it, I don't want our people being, you know, hamstrung, and people are driving away when they could be spending the money here in Heartland. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I didn't tell chief that I was bringing this up, so.
Surprise. As you may know, that's not, this is not something like directly in our wheelhouse that we're enforcing every day of the week, so I can't quote the details of the statute to you exact. But I do know our ordinance doesn't allow it past nine PM. I do know through the state, there is some leeway to that, as the president has stated, to have some of those sales for certain products later to that midnight time period.
Thank you.
Could you just confirm, you said the state, or our ordinance only says till nine?
Correct.
So if the state says till twelve, isn't ours more strict, wouldn't we have to go at nine?
So right now, the law of the land in Heartland is nine, no one sells past nine. So I think what the president was trying to say is the board can review that at some point to say if they want to change that ordinance to be, sell whatever products later.
Okay, so right now, though, it's only till nine?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any discussion? So it was moved forward, it was passed that we approved this, or the motion and the second was to approve this with twenty-four hour use. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have, thank you, chief, for the input. Now we have consider, we have items that, other items of the consideration. We have consideration of a petition to annex property from the town of Merton owned by Gideon Farms LLC, forty-two point seven two-two acres. The items that would be part of this are the first reading of a bill for an ordinance, zero four, twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, an ordinance annexing territory to the Village of Heartland, Wisconsin, the Village of Heartland, Wisconsin pursuant to Wisconsin statute sixty-six point zero two one seven subsection two. The second part of this would be to refer this to Plan Commission. So the fact that I have stated it already will act as the first reading, which will take care of item A of this. If the board wants to discuss, ask questions, anything that the board would want to do, any trustee would want to do, we can go back and forth on, or they can at least speak on. The only other item that we have on this would be to refer it to the Plan Commission for review of zoning and recommendation to the village board so that the Plan Commission can let us know, as we have to do through our ordinances and state statute, that they would let us know what they suggest we do.
Real quick, I just want to say Mr. Gale is in the audience, the owner of the property. So this is the first step, just to give you an idea, this would go to the Plan Commission from here, where they would create a zoning, a use, there would, there's going to be a plan unit development. We are talking to the village attorney on Wednesday about all of this. There's quite a bit with this, and Mr. Gale is aware of that, but we just wanted to start the process. The third reading won't happen until we're ready to move through with the plan unit. Generally, we tie an annexation, generally, an annexation has been for a subdivision, which goes hand in hand with the project. This is a little different, because this is a phased-in project, there's going to have different phases that we'll call it in the plan unit development, and if those change, Mr. Gale would come back to modify that plan unit development, but that's where we will be moving from here. So the next step would be to move it to the Plan Commission for May, the May meeting. They would review it, hopefully make a recommendation as to zoning, but again, it would be a plan unit development, so it would be an overlay, because there's quite a bit going on there. But that is the next step, and then from there, we'd come back to the village board for a reading and a final reading once we're done with every, all the documents associated with the project. His goal, I believe, do you care if I share your timeline? I believe it's to get the utilities and stormwater items done, hopefully midsummer, hopefully shovel on the ground in August, September for the parcels that you saw previously. Nothing has changed on that plan as of yet?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to refer to the Planning Commission for review of zoning and recommendation to the village board.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded to refer this to the Planning Commission, so we can look over the zone. I say that because I'm on the Planning Commission, so they can look over the zoning and recommend, give their recommendation to the village board. That Planning Commission meeting is on five, twenty, twenty twenty-four, for anybody that would want to go there. Again, well, I shouldn't say that. Does anybody, any discussion? I think it's a fantastic thing that you're bringing to that property. I'm very excited to see it coming to the village. I hope everybody is strongly for it, but I'm only one person. I think staff as well, as I see the nods, is also excited for it, but all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. If you'd like to hear more about this, please go to the meeting, the Plan Commission meeting. It'll be in this room, five, twenty, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, sir. Now, as was sent out, we have consideration of the 2025 budget preparation schedule. I know for myself, when we get to that schedule in a few months, I'll call and say, what day was that on? But we have a schedule here that our wonderful village manager has laid out, and at least we get something on the calendar.
Yeah, so these dates all are similar to the previous year, days flow with all of our meetings at the end. The key ones for me to look at with you, the board, would be September eleventh and September twelfth. September eleventh, that is the twenty-fifth, twenty-third anniversary of September eleventh, so it's, I don't know if you have a problem meeting on September eleventh, if there's other things going on. Those are the two days that, we just try and do a Wednesday and Thursday, so, I mean, we can do a Tuesday, Thursday if you would prefer, but I give this to you, we set it in stone, just to make sure everybody, like Mr. Pfeiffer can look at their calendar to make sure those two days work. All the other days are just strictly for public knowledge of kind of how the process goes. Department heads will get their books after I close June, so mid-July, they get it back to me in a couple of weeks. We talk about it in panic, and then we get it to you mid-September, and we go from there. That's why we panic.
Any opposition to the dates? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 budget preparation schedule as stated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the schedule put forth by the village manager for the budget preparation. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I agree that the two dates, eleventh and twelfth, are important. With my work schedule, is there any possibility we can start at six? Because I'm the only pharmacist, so I can't close early.
I have no opposition to that.
We can, just go later, just whoever made the motion, I would amend it, and we'll, we can start at six.
I don't have an opposition to it.
No food? Food will be five thirty.
Well, that, no, they have that, but there's still going to be food.
Yeah. Labor four, six.
Well, if you get enough, there'll be enough.
I'll just take leftovers, like a bird on this, you know, anything's left over. I'll bring my protein bars, I'll be fine. I amend the motion? Yeah, I amend the motion to approve the 2025 budget preparation schedule with the changes on September eleventh, September twelfth, that it starts at six PM versus five PM.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to amend the motion to approve the schedule that on September eleventh and twelfth, the meeting starts at six o'clock. So the vote now, just so you know, is only on the amendment. We will need to take another vote to approve the entire schedule, just saying that for clarity. All in favor of the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries, so this schedule is now technically changed to six o'clock, even though it doesn't show up that way. It's changed to six o'clock for September eleventh and twelfth. All in favor of the schedule in its entirety? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Great job, everybody, we did an amendment, moved right through it, we're like rocking and rolling, we're like looking like a regular board and everything, it's awesome. I thought that's awesome. So that budget schedule's set with those changes from the amendment. Now we have a consideration of board commission and committee appointments as presented by the village president, Fannerstow. So I'm going to go down the list, I want to touch on one before I start getting going on the reading of the list. In the past, I have been, I think every, every year, every year that I've been on the board, I've been on board of review. I think it's good for other people to get experience doing that. You can think about it, because I'll take board of review up at the end. I'm saying this to all the trustees now, there is a trustee appointment, but there's also a citizen appointment. So typically, typically, it's been a trustee, but it's also been another trustee that's gone in on the citizen appointment. It's worked out well, it's up to you guys to think about, I'll take those at the end, but I'm going to run through just the list. For architectural board, we got David De Corsi Bower. I understand that sometimes people may not like that he's a, he's a hard presser on some environmental issues and other things. I think it's good to keep him on, because if anything, as people come at me, and you know they do, they blast me, beat me up, and say all kinds of stuff, like Jeff's just putting his own people on, David De Corsi Bower backs down to no one if there's a dirt pile that's under a tree line or anything, but he does, in the long run, look out for what's at best of the village and keeping, holding, holding everyone to a standard. To pull him off, just because he might not be ideologically with me on everything, would be completely wrong if his mind is in the right place, so I'm going to, I'm stating that I'd like to keep him on. My name being on there, to be quite honest with you, for architectural board, it doesn't have to be on. I only have to be on for Plan Commission, but since we have Plan Commission and a joint architectural board, because by state law, I have to be on there for plan, I'm just on there because I have to be so sorry you're stuck with me. Ann Walshlager, I will be keeping on Plan Commission, but Ann Walshlager is, she's on plan, and those aren't split boards, so with architectural, I'll be keeping her on. Board of Review, I touched on, I'm going to take that one up at the end. Delhart Commission, I have not heard from anybody that they do not want to continue on there. We have David Lammerand, our former village president who served twenty-six years. We have Adam Pfeifer, who my understanding is he's done fantastic with it, even though it sometimes is tough with his schedule, he really makes an effort to get there. Linda Holquist is enjoying it to the best of my knowledge, and has expressed an eagerness to continue. Ann Walshlager also has, to the best of my understanding, enjoyed being on there and enjoys going in and working with Della Field on Delhart. I'm going to keep everybody the same, or I'm, this is what I'm putting forth to the board. For library board, Lee Bronberger, who's currently the president, now they'll have to reelect this stuff. So I am going to reappoint or put forth before the board, Lee Bronberger. I'm not saying Lee and I always see eye to eye, but I have talked and spent much time speaking with the library director, who feels confident and comfortable that Lee Bronberger is doing, doing what's right for the library, and I am not going to go against that. I'm not going to, and I wouldn't anyways. I mean, the best way you can find out about something is go into their house and find out what's going on. And in talking with the library director, it sounds to me like Lee is making good decisions, making sound decisions, sound financial decisions, and doing things that are going to continue to propel the library forward. So I will be re-upping my request of the board that we approve Lee Bronberger for many reasons, and it sounds like she's doing an outstanding job. I will be doing the same thing in talking with the library director. I will be doing the same thing with Linda Holquist. When we get to park and recreation board, Rick Connor has served on that board at some point, and I know Rick does show an interest in wanting to come on to Plan Commission at some time, and I think somehow we have to look at that at some point. Rick has done a great job with the, with the park board. Randy Farrell, I called and talked to the park board president, says he's doing a good job, has good input. I know that Randy Farrell has, I mean, I've, he coached my kids, that's not why I'm making the appointment, but he does have a background in rec and understands why it's important that we keep the parks nice and that the whole community can use them. I think it's a great thing. We also have Kathleen Van Thiel. I'm going to request that the board reappoint all of them. For police and fire commission, we do have Joe Leisman, or also known as J.D. Leisman. He was just appointed not long ago. He has shown to be a strong, he's pro-police and fire, but also is able to discern and make decisions that are going to be best for the Village of Heartland. I'm going to keep him, I'm asking the board to keep him as well. That's probably, that's a big one, because that's a five-year commitment. So what I'd like to do is circle back, because I'm not changing any of the appointments except for when it comes to board of review. Is there a trustee, and I, please correct me on who it was last year, what trustee would like to step forward for board of review? If, okay? Yeah, who was on, I'm not sure. But no, she, Ann said she wants to do it.
I'm just talking, I just want to give you the date. The board of review date is Wednesday, June twelfth, from five to seven PM. We are statutorily required to be there for two hours, even if nobody comes.
Jim, you would like to?
No, I was, I was on last year.
Would you like to do it again? It's up to you, you don't have to.
No, I mean, if, no, Ann can handle it.
We need to.
It's myself, myself, the president, the clerk, and then we.
Wait a minute. I'm trying to get out of it.
No, you can't.
Oh, I didn't know, dang it, really?
Yes.
I thought I was, oh, man, I didn't know that. Okay, well, it doesn't matter who it is, then, because I'm stuck, no, I'm kidding.
If, if no one else is stepping up to the plate, I'll, I'll be glad to do it. That's, I'd be, I'd be missing my golf league, but that's all right.
Sorry, no one else is hard charging like you are to step up and.
President Fannerstow, I've got a question on library board appointments. Is it a three-year term for Mr. Bronberger and Linda Holquist? Yeah, just wanted to verify.
We used to do things, I read the rule, we found out about this, because I was looking into other things. There were some things that we did that were kind of status quo based on how we used to do it. Even like your own term, Mr. Truschel, they used to appoint a trustee, and we found out the rules are, you're appointing the person, so they still get a three-year term, but they're allowed to be a trustee. So even, let's say tomorrow, you're like, I'm done with the village board, I'm done, you are still on the library board.
Right, right.
You would still retain your sheet, there would just be no trustee on there. There's not a mandate that a trustee have, they used to do things like that, I am a man of the law. That's the way the law is written, there's nothing that says we can go and be like, no, we have to have a trustee on there.
Yep.
Does that make sense? So yes, all the appointments are for the terms listed. Now, the village terms for like park board and stuff like that, like the trustee that represents on the park board, that comes up every year, but the citizen appointments, that's also a three-year term, is that for park board? Three-year term?
Two.
It is two?
No, no.
No, it's three, it's three-year term.
Okay.
The park board president just tried to correct me when I was right.
I just wanted to verify that, thank you.
Yep.
So I would be the citizen selection, and Ann's the.
Is that okay? You still have the same rights on the board.
No, that's fine.
Yep, I figured, yep, sure. Walshlager would be, trustee Walshlager would be the trustee appointment, and trustee Holquist will be the citizen appointment. All good? So that means that the entire, well, whoever says it, just, they would have to fill in.
Oh, you know what? I can't do it.
Okay.
I'm on, out of the country. I'm on vacation.
That makes it a little tough. Thank you for being so honest. We will move forward with the trustee appointment, since no other trustees will step up. We will find a citizen that would like to be part of their local government and get involved with board of review. I'm kidding, let's have a little fun with it, for goodness sake. Everybody knows what we're going through here in Heartland. They're all watching. We're going to leave citizen open, we'll get that one appointed, it's not a problem. We have until May to do that.
Yeah, actually, the first meeting in May, we will adjourn to a later date, so at that point, we could come up with one.
Wait, in, in May? So is he still able to do it?
No, we have to meet.
Yeah, we have to meet in May. Yep. We're going to leave, is it okay with the board? I just want to add, is it okay with the board, we're going to leave citizen open? We'll go find somebody that, I mean, actually has an interest. somebody that, I mean, actually has an interest, wants to do it. Uh, if you guys know of anybody that you wanna bring the names forward or call me with the names, I'd appreciate it. Uh, typically, it's someone with a financial background or a real estate, and, you know, understands, cuz we are looking at people's property value, which obviously affects their pocketbooks big time. Right? So, uh, if anybody knows of anybody, uh, it's a really cool service to do for the village, and it's actually not a huge time commitment. The board of review usually only meets twice. Well, we meet to adjourn, and then we meet that one day where we meet for two to three hours. That's it. It's a great way to give back to your community, but it is a huge effect cuz people coming with their assessments that are fighting them, we're deciding it.
Sure, okay.
Um, I believe you can make a motion to approve the, the, the list, but you have to include the names.
I have to include all the names.
No, the names of the blank ones.
Got you.
For board of review.
Alright, so I'll make a motion that we approve the board commission and committee appointments as presented by village president Fannerstall with Ann Walsh Lager taking the trustee appointment and leaving the citizen member appointment vacant for now.
For the board of review.
For the board of review, yeah, thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the list with the change of for board of review. Trustee Walsh Lager will be the, uh, trustee required in that position for board of review. And the citizen appointment will remain open at this time. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have discussion and consideration of rescheduling the May twenty-seventh, twenty-four, twenty-four village board meeting to May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four.
Obviously, just cuz that's Memorial Day on Monday, so.
We can't just cancel.
You can, then we just, uh, if you, if you move, please allow me to pay bills like we do in December. We would do a normal pay run and you would approve it in June. Otherwise, we're gonna go a month without payables. We do it in December.
I'll make a motion that we cancel the meeting for May twenty-seventh with bills being approved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we cancel the May twenty-seventh meeting. Sure. It's been moved and seconded. We're gonna leave the floor open for a second. Ryan's running upstairs, so. In fact, there's a motion on the floor. I'm gonna do this properly. I'm gonna call a recess cuz while he's upstairs.
Is aware I sent some information about an incident that we were in over the weekend off of Highway 16 where one of our officers noticed a stolen vehicle. Pursuit ensued. That vehicle did crash on I-94 in the area between like Grandview and Meadowbrook. There were some civilian vehicles struck during that crash, but no injuries. Minor injuries to the suspect that did crash and we were assisted by many departments in the area, but being right there in the City of Waukesha, we had a lot of City of Waukesha support and their K-9 unit that helped us locate that subject after he fled on foot after crashing the car on I-94. So we were able to successfully arrest and then charge that person for the looting and reckless endangering safety.
Thank you, Chief.
Again, I know that this is kind of banging a pretty heavy drum, but thank you, Mr. Felkner, and you've done a fantastic job. The village was lucky to have you when we had you and I sent you a text the other day when I was at the park with my family. It looks amazing what you guys have done, the whole department, what you guys have done is fantastic and you've been a great leader for that team and a great representative for the village. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. You're gonna be missed, big shoes.
I'll be around.
Trustee DeBoer, anything?
Oh, now you can. Well, I just wanted to say congratulations to Dave. Good job. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you very much.
On May 4th is the Bark River Bash. It's been going on for a few years now. It's a good time. It's fun. Gets community together. Kicks off the summer. I mean, let's hope. Fingers crossed. You know, you never know. It could be a blizzard, but let's hope that doesn't happen. I mean, we've had it as late as May 10th. We got, so it's, it's an approximation, but nine to two, nine to 11, they have the canoe and kayak run. 12 to 12:30, they have the duck derby. Don't forget to go out and get your ducks, get your tickets. One to two is a raffle and 10 to 2 are the vendors. So you can go out there and get, go and see the vendors, spend your money, bring a wad of cash and just go spend your money and, and support your local community and have some fun. It's always a good time. Beer Garden will be open, so there's no reason not to be there. They won't have bloodies, but they'll have Beer Garden, so you're, you're good to go. And also music. Lastly, I guess I'll just, Dave, what's the exact date? Well, I really, I mean, this is one of these where I've been able to see it go all the way through from standing in a garage saying, "What's the issue?" To being like, "Oh, okay, you're gonna leave now." But, you know, I'm sorry I couldn't get you in there earlier, but I did have to beg to get you in there. And, but it was, this isn't pat myself on the back, it's to pat you on the back of just saying, I mean, it's easy to see someone really good at what they do and someone who really cares, someone who's honest and someone that carries themselves with an immense amount of integrity when you see it. And it wasn't hard to see it in you. And I just want you to know that I'm better for knowing you. The village is better because of your service and I'm guessing that most people are better people because of knowing you. You have a wonderful personality. You're a wonderful man. I am sad to see you go, but there's no question it's one hundred percent deserved. And, man, I just, I, I wish I could have gotten you in there sooner, but at least we got you in there. It's, it's well deserved. Mr. Felkner, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You can see him May 30 at Public Works, 11:30 to question mark. So come on down.
I know you don't want anything, Dave, but I'm not gonna just listen to you and not have something public, so I will begin the getting that going and hope that you will be there. But I'll run the date by you first, because you're not gonna just scoot out with a private-only party.
May 30.
It is. Friday, May 30 at Public Works, 11:30 to question mark.
Oh, it's at Public Works?
At Public Works.
And there's going to be food. Again, I will set up something. All right. I'll end the, as, well, never mind, I can't say that. Thank you, Dave. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. Dave Jambretts, do you have anything to add in announcements? I'm very sorry, I want to make sure you get a chance to speak. Or Chief Jambretts, I'm very sorry.
Head and home tomorrow, so.
Thank you, Chief. Everybody's spoken in announcements, so at this point, what we do is what? I'm sorry. Yep, you're right. Pursuant to, our next item after announcements is pursuant to 19.85, subsection 1, even more subsection G, upon a motion duly made, may convene in a closed session to confer with legal counsel on a strategy regarding pending or anticipated legal litigation arising out of related, out of or related to the claim filed by Aaron Wells against the Village of Heartland. That would need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion. We go into closed session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into closed session based on the exemption that we're allowed under 19.85-1G. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? We need to roll call vote. You're right, thank you. Roll call it.
Trustee DeBoer?
Trustee DeBoer? That's an aye.
Trustee Churchill?
Aye.
Trustee Piper?
Aye.
Trustee Fannerstone?
Aye.
Trustee Walsh Lager? Aye. Trustee Holquist?
Aye.
And Trustee Connor?
Aye. That's affirmed. We're going to closed session.[395.75]
All right.
We're in open session.
All right, I would like to make a motion based on our closed session meeting that we deny claims by Aaron Wells against the village of Heartland and we approve the disallowance process by our attorney.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to deny claims made by Aaron Wells against the village of Heartland and to approve the disallowance process by the attorney or two of the attorney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.